Okay, everybody, welcome to the Crosslake City Public Hearing on Short-Term Rentals. It's Monday, August 12th at 6:00 PM. One announcement I want to make is I would like to introduce Lori Conway to the city. She is our new city administrator. Put her on the spot right off the bat, that's good. Okay, review the draft, Chip, can you take it?
Sure, just, I was aware, or I was told today that we did not hear back from the lawyer, so we will not be making any motion on this tonight until we hear back from the lawyer on some of the issues that we had sent to him, so. So this will be pretty quick. Char made the adjustments from the last meeting, so I'm not going to read through the whole entire ordinance, but all the, the general purpose is all good. We're going to turn to page two, Article Two Regulations, under D. We just made a couple clerical additions, so an affidavit signed by the owner or the owner's authorized agent certifying that the STR is in, is inhabitable condition and complies with health and safety standards set forth in this chapter. E, we changed that to thirty-minute distance. It used to be sixty-minute distance, so that, we changed that to thirty minutes. Bump to the next page, twenty-three dash five, Health and Life Safety Standards. F, all vehicles shall be parked in designated parking areas, and parking is prohibited in any landscape area. Improved service areas on the site shall be sufficient to enable a car for every three occupants to park during the hours of ten PM to seven AM the following day. I, of twenty-three dash five, I, a license number signed in a form approved by the City of Crosslake shall be posted underneath the E-911 address, visible from the exterior of the STR, to passerby identifying the property as a short-term rental.
And they are supplied by the city when they get their license?
Char has them, yep. Twenty-three dash six, originally I discussed doing inspections every year. After talking more with the state fire marshal, they think that they're working on a statewide short-term rental policy. It's not in effect yet, but all hotels and things like that are every three years, so we're going to revert back to the original every three years. So Char is going to make that change on twenty-three dash six to the original paragraph. And that reads, inspections, each, each STR shall obtain a fire and life safety inspection as a condition of, of license issuance, and every three years thereafter. Requests for inspection shall be made to the Crosslake Fire Department at least sixty days prior to the date of the initial license application, and at least sixty days prior to the end of the, each subsequent, subsequent?
Subsequent.
Yeah, three years, period. Items to be inspected, we've been through all that. Again, we don't charge, this will not be charged every time we go, that's part of your license fee. So there's no charge unless you go back, have to, unless I have to go back, or one of my firefighters have to go back for a re-inspection.
Can I just, can I just ask a question about, if we're not going to do those inspections every year, those inspections were part of that license fee, so what are we doing there?
Well, that's part of the fee, yes.
I know, but that's why you need it.
We're going to probably have new ones every year, I mean, that's up to you all.
We're going to review the licensing fee.
Yeah, and if there's any changes to the structure, or any permits pulled, or anything like that, they have to get re-inspected.
But the, the seven fifty that, that was put in here was based on the fact that they were going to have inspections every year.
And that's based on the first year that we're going to do it, the next year we're going to review the licensing fee. And if we're collecting too much money, we'll lower it, if we need more, we'll raise it, you know, right? So it's a yearly, annually, we'll redo it.
All right. Twenty-three, five.
That was just it, and, well, an inspection every three years unless you've been changes to the.
Correct, there'll be wording in there if there's any changes to the structure, change the use, whatever it may be. All right, section twenty-three dash seven, we added no holding tanks allowed. The second paragraph of twenty-three dash seven, last sentence, trash, storage containers must be removed from roadside pickup within twenty-four hours of scheduled pickup.
Do we need to say anything about before the pickup? I mean, same day as the pickup and removed within twenty-four hours?
Well, scheduled pickup date should be.
Oh, scheduled pickup day you have in here?
Yeah.
Okay, so they can't sit out there all week?
No.
Yeah.
Twenty-three eleven, I think we, are we, that's sixty minutes for a complaint for response from the property manager, correct? Twenty-three dash eleven, complaints.
Resolve it within sixty minutes, respond to it within thirty minutes, correct? Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
It doesn't say respond.
It does not say respond.
I think it does someplace else.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say respond.
Earlier it does, yeah, this is a complaint, yeah. Enforcement, I think we're waiting on the lawyer on this, right, Char?
Correct.
Okay.
The rest of it is all.
Okay, so those are the only changes that we made. Counsel, have any questions on that?
Okay, let's take it, does the counsel have anything to say before we open it up to public?
No, I'm happy with it.
All right, we're going to open it up to public comment. Name and address, please. Come on, break the ice.
I'll break the ice. My name is Ann, and I live on Edgewater Lane.
Yeah.
Ann Schwartz, one-three-eight-zero-three, Edgewater Lane. Okay, so, one thing, there are a bunch of things I want to point out, and then I have a proposal, okay? My husband and I are residents up here, we've owned our property for twenty-five years, it's not one of the mansions on Edgewater Lane, it's a small home. And we have a guest cabin, four hundred square feet, two tiny bedrooms, a bathroom, and a kitchen. We'd love to have that available to our family and friends, and not rent, but the rising costs up here, especially the property taxes, we've had to find another means, we're retired to be able to stay up here. My general concern is, I see too many things happening in Crosslake, in this area, that are driving out the long-term residents, who provide a lot of value to this city, including my husband and myself, hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours. Okay, so, in order not to be driven out, we need to find creative ways to pay all these fees, taxes, to be able to stay here. We are very responsible renters, our, our small cabin is seasonal, we rented only four or five weeks this summer to offset property tax costs. We live on the property year-round, so a lot of the risks that you've cited do not apply to our situation at all. We do everything above board, so therefore we've notified everybody who's supposed to be notified when we started renting. I think your bigger concern should be the people who don't do that.
Ann, could you help us just for a second, try to decipher who those people are compared to who people like you are?
What do you mean, who? Oh, the people who rent and don't let you know that they're renting, or the county know that they're renting?
No, but the, the people who run out four times a week, or the people who run out forty weeks a year? I mean, how do we, how do we figure out who they are?
Well, I guess you don't know what you don't know, but if you ask for the information, so for example, I already pay a license fee to the county, I already pay.
Which you won't have to pay next year, because you're going to pay it here.
Okay, and I already pay a sales tax to Ideal Corner Township.
Okay.
I pay occupancy taxes, I pay income taxes, obviously. So, when you notify people that you're doing short-term rental, you have to fill out paperwork, and then they know, they ask, are you seasonal, are you year-round, how many bedrooms do you have, do you have septic? And so, for example, with Crow Wing County, the fee is graduated based on those things. And that would be my proposal to you. If you have, you know, I don't, go ahead and do the license through Crosslake, that's fine, and I understand a lot of your concerns, but you've never been to my property.
You're great, you're perfect. If everybody was like you, we wouldn't be here right now.
Well, okay, so don't punish the people who do it responsibly.
Well, you're already paying money to the county for licensing, you're doing the right thing. You're paying the Lakeshore tax, that's the right thing, you're paying your income taxes. So the City of Crosslake is going to charge you a little more, because we are going to do a fire inspection, life safety inspection.
Life safety. I've already been inspected by the county, but yes, then you'll do it too?
The county does not do.
You won't find anything.
The county does not do life safety inspections.
What's that?
The county does not do life safety inspections.
Oh, life saving?
Life safety.
Oh, life safety, okay. Well, they inspected the property, made sure I had a fire extinguisher, made sure I didn't have septic, I don't have septic, so you don't need to worry about that, I'm on one of the few people who's paying for the sewer.
So basically, what you're doing with the county, you're just going to be doing with the City of Crosslake, you won't have to deal with the county.
Okay, that's all right, but I like dealing with the county, because it's two hundred dollars instead of seven hundred and fifty.
So your complaint is the fee, but everything else is the same, we follow the same platform, GovOS, the same platform as the county.
Okay, so then I wouldn't pay seven hundred and fifty, you, they do a graduated fee, so I'm recommending to you to do something similar, because I'm not high-risk for you, and you won't be spending much time at my place, I'm there all the time, so I'm proposing that if somebody who's renting has septic, you slap on, you know, start at a hundred bucks or whatever, someone has septic, slap on another hundred bucks. If they don't live on sites, slap on another two hundred bucks.
How about if I were to say to you, just rent yours out for five to six weeks, instead of four to five?
Can I just finish, though?
Okay.
Thank you. If it's year-round, you slap on another two hundred bucks, because you have, the risk goes up with each one of these things, and the work goes up with each one of these things. If you allow, like, I don't allow for boats to be docked there, or a lift, you know, that increases your workload if that happens, and the risk. Maybe by number of bedroom, like the county does it, you know, it's a hundred bucks a bedroom, things like that, just to be more equitable for everybody, and, just want to see if there's anything else that I'm missing here. So, because of those mitigating factors, the risk at my property is slim to none, and that's why I'm asking for some flexibility and variables to be incorporated into the fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody want to comment on that?
Well, I understand her, I understand her rationale, and I don't know, it'd have to be, I mean, Chip, you know, do you want to address that?
That's not my position, I think everybody's treated the same, it's up to you to determine the price, the cost.
Yeah, I just think that, how are we going to go through four hundred of them and decide who's, which we, you know, we just need to do it. We're going to charge what we charge the first year, the next year we'll take a look at it, and see how it plays out. Our, our goal here is to protect the neighbors, and it's not to charge the general population with an extra tax to pay for this. We want the short-term rentals to pay for the service. So we're going to, we picked that number, that's what we're going to do for the first year, we'll see how it turns out. Come on up, Doug.
My name is Douglas Steele, one-one-four-eight-six Manhattan Point Boulevard, and I'm a long-term resident, too, I've been here since nineteen forty-six, living on the same piece of ground. And I'm one of the unfortunate ones. Now, the lady, she's got a, she's got a, because we all that live up here have people that come and visit us, and basically, that's, she's in a position where she lives on the property. And if somebody is going to create the problems that most of these properties create, she's going to be the one that suffers, and she isn't going to do that, she'll go stop whatever is going on. And those are people I've personally, myself, I don't care that she rents it, I don't even think she should probably pay any taxes on it, because it's basically just a.
Doug, you're not making this easier, you're not, you're not making this easier for us here.
I understand that, and that's not my job.
Okay.
I've got a lot of complaints that are not my job either, but I went through most of this, and a lot of the things that you've got on here are rational, and, but some of them, like, all the vehicles should be parked in a, in a driveway, or, you know, in a driveway. Now, I live next to a rental unit that they have anywhere from seven to twelve or fourteen cars parked, and it's an old, it's an old two-bedroom, it's an old one-bedroom cabin that's had another, a little bit added on, so I think there's only two on the main floor, there might be three, but I haven't been in it since they remodeled it, but I know there is two. So, if I've got a, saying, ten cars sitting parked outside, first of all, ten times two is twenty people, okay? Now, you're talking about three people per car, that's even worse. And on the Manhattan Point Boulevard, all of the families up there have septic systems. Well, this property that's next to me, it, it has actually a fairly new one, I put in because the old one collapsed, and they, they put in a new well, which is a good thing, because the septic system is close to their well, and it's not too far from mine, but...
Doug, this ordinance will eliminate ten of those cars parked on the property next to you.
Well, yeah, but, and I hope that that's, that's why I say, but I'm saying, if it eliminates ten cars, it's going to have, how many, you say, three cars, four cars?
Well, there's three people allowed per bedroom, right?
Three, three, they could have twelve people and three, and four cars.
Twelve people and four cars, okay. Now, that's, if it's a three-bedroom, I don't think it is, but probably two.
Correct, it'll, it'll need a septic compliance.
Yeah, but for how long?
That's stated in the ordinance.
You know, are you going to watch it?
Every five, every five years.
Because that's one of the things that bothers me, because.
We're going to watch, Doug, and we're, that's why we're charging the licensing fee, so that we cover the cost that it costs for us to watch them. I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to do. And if they park ten cars there, they're going to, somebody's going to call and complain, they're going to get a fine.
Now, let's come back to that, you just put your foot in your mouth.
All right.
Because there's only supposed to be, how many cars at them today? There's only supposed to be three or four cars.
That's what I said, and if they park ten there, then.
But they park ten, now.
Well, that's.
I've complained about ten.
I know, Doug, but hopefully the city.
And that brings another problem.
Hopefully the city is going to have closer eyes on it than the county historically has had.
Well.
That's why we're doing it here.
Well, that's, that's the good thing, but these are the things that we need to be very cautious about, because I, first of all, it's hard to complain about them, because you call City Hall and ask for the police, and they, I'll be very honest with you, and I hate to say this, but they're slow a lot of times. And then, the other thing is, is that I finally called nine-one-one on, on one of them, and I'm going to use that as an example, because it's happened more often, and I get hollered at, because I'm not supposed to call nine-one-one.
We'll have a call number.
Except for an emergency.
We'll have a call number there for you, we've got a, a place hired that's going to get that phone call from you.
Well, that's, the thing is, I didn't see that in here.
Okay, well.
I, it's something that, when you need someplace, the only thing I saw is you're going to, you're going to talk to somebody that they've hired supposedly that's responding in thirty minutes, how are you going to find the number? And I'll use a really good example, Saturday night, at two-thirty in the morning, they were out screaming and shouting and carrying on, and the music was loud, and my wife couldn't sleep last night, because the noise, not last night, Saturday night, I'm sorry, Saturday night, and she couldn't sleep, because these people were out there screaming and hollering, and the language is, and it comes, my house is fairly close to this property.
I was at your house with you.
Well, it's not very far away.
Right.
And even with the windows shut and the air conditioner going, it wakes you up.
So Doug, we're, we're trying to implement this here locally, because we're going to try to respond and cover those, this is going to be a work in motion.
Well, it needs to be a, a work that we sit and we stop, and as we do it, we need to look and see what we can have done to facilitate, first of all, how do you do complaints? And we need to make sure that that's a process where I can look in the phone, or I can, I can Google Crosslake, and there'll be a phone number to call to deal with.
Short-term rentals, yeah.
Short-term rentals. There isn't anything like that.
Let us know if there's something that you're having a hard time doing, because we will correct it.
Well, I'm just going through that right at the moment, I'm saying that there are things on here, the septic system scares me to death, I'll be very honest with you.
We're going to be inspecting them all.
Okay, and I hope you do, inspections are great, they're just, they got to be done, and they got to be done by people that understand it, and.
Septic compliance people are going to do it.
Well, whatever, but as I say, it's, these, this is things, parking, they park, I've got cars at least part of the time from there, matter of fact, I'll be very honest with you, one day I come home and they parked in my driveway, and I couldn't even get into my garage.
Well, that's where you got to do a complaint, Doug, you got to do it, and, and we'll follow it up, and if we don't follow it up, then you got to come back in there and tell us what a poor job we're doing.
Well, I have done that.
And Doug, and you know, in the very first section, twenty-three C, number G, they're required to contact you and provide you, you know, information like regarding a contact number, so.
Who is?
The owner of the property that's renting the house.
That's next to you, so that, they're required by, according to this ordinance, to, to provide you with that information.
How do you find out who owns it?
Well, there's going to be their name right on the fire number at the driveway.
I, I called the city manager.
We're going to try to make it easier for you, Doug, promise.
Well, just hang on, I called the city manager, and I was talking to him about a problem, and he couldn't find out who owned it, he says, well, this, this is an LLC.
Well, Doug, you're going to see some improvements in attitude.
Yeah, that's all we can say, and I, I really hate to cut you off, Doug, but we've got.
Don't cut off, but.
We've got thirty-five minutes left, and there's a lot of people here, so.
Okay, well, as I say, the thing is that there's been a lot going on, and it's been very difficult for the people that live next to these people.
This is taking place January first is when we're going to do it, you've got my phone number, if you have problems, call me up, and I will come over.
Oh, yes, I do, you don't want to say that.
I, I want you to do that.
Ask the last mayor.
All right, who's going to follow that up?
I don't, you're going to have to maybe put a time limit on comments.
Time limit, five minutes?
It depends how many people want to talk.
Or just, or three minutes or something, I think, we want to hear from all of you, so.
Hi.
Hi.
Terry Cram, one-three-four-six-nine Island View, Terry, T-E-R-I, one R-N-I, nine-one-three-four-six-nine Island View Road. I've been a resident for, okay, I'll discuss, twenty-eight years, over on Island View. So I just had a couple of questions, in section twenty-three seven, you talk about holding tanks, you actually talk about no holding tanks.
Mm-hmm.
Is that true?
That is true.
Is it no holding tanks?
That is true, no holding tanks.
So if a current STR has a license and an exception from the county with a holding tank, you're going to say no.
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing.
No exceptions?
No exceptions.
We are recording, so, okay. I just had another one where, you guys had the, okay, I was trying to write where we went to, so twenty-three eleven complaints, and you had said that they'll have to give us, I'm a, I am next door to an STR.
Okay.
That they will give me that information, which is fine, we get it through our association anyways, but when you're talking about the person that's making the complaint, that they should get a hold of the person that owns it, are you talking about the renters?
I don't know that we said that, Terry, I think there's a number that you call, and correct me, Chip, and they will get a hold of the owner, and they will give them thirty minutes to get out there and respond to it.
So I'm not to call the city?
Sixty minutes to correct it, thirty minutes to respond to it. So there's not going to be a huge time delay.
Is it a complaint about the property, is it a complaint about anything in here?
Parking, garbage, whatever it is.
So I need to get a hold of that number, who will then get a hold of the owner, who will then take care of it, how does that get logged as far as your?
Chip, who is?
So, every short-term rental needs to have an owner or a property manager listed.
Yep.
When you call GovOS, you give them the address, they know how to contact the property owner, property manager, now, and it's, everything's recorded, your conversation, everything's recorded, we get a printout of it, and if it's something, needs to be immediate attention that the property manager, or if nobody's responding, then we get a call, and then we have to take care of it, and that's a fine.
And Terry, if they don't respond, or if they're not called, or they don't get out there in, in thirty minutes, there's going to be a thousand-dollar fine, and that's what we're going to do to try to get these people to play by the rules.
Yep, I, I've read all that, I'm good, I just want to know if you were referring to just the renters should call, or the neighbors should call, all?
You call that.
And, and that, that doesn't mean that you still can't call, I mean, if it's a noise complaint at two o'clock, or three o'clock in the morning, you don't, you don't want to wait an hour for somebody to show up.
Right, that's, they're failing to operate under the city ordinance anyway.
Right.
In general, not short-term rental, just the city ordinance.
Correct, so.
And at that time, call nine-one-one, dispatch?
There's a non-emergency number for that, but, yeah.
Okay.
Goes to the same place.
Well, what I was leading up to with that one was, there's three violations in a twelve-month period, right?
Yep.
How does that violation get recorded, is it my call to her that goes to here, that you guys, and I'm not complaining about the response, I'm just asking, how does that three violations get recorded to be, come, three violations in a year, how do we as?
That is one of the things we're waiting to hear back from our attorney on, and.
So my call isn't one of those three that you know of yet, or that's, again, what you're saying to me, you're waiting to find out if one of those calls?
We're waiting to figure out how that, how we count those.
Okay.
Chip, isn't it part of the, the website?
Yeah, it's part of the whole platform, but if it's just a call there being noisy, that's a city ordinance, not an STR ordinance after a certain hour, but if there's any other complaints, if it's not handled within that timeframe, then it becomes.
A violation.
A violation.
And the police department can keep track of that type of stuff.
Even though it's a city ordinance, it's still a violent.
Track, every, the address will have every information that's ever been contacted or, and it's all.
Okay.
But violation of a noise ordinance would be one of those complaints, and should be substantiated by the police department showing up, and should go against that license.
Yes.
But I would encourage you to take pictures or recordings, or do whatever you can, you know, I mean, if you can, if you're able to.
Yeah, I've already started.
Because you could be quiet by the time they get there.
So GovOS will have an email as well, and you can send them, so it's all documented in their address.
Sure, and I assume that we'll get, once you get with the lawyers, or hear from the lawyers, there'll be another thing sent out, so that we all will see what was agreed upon. there'll be another thing sent out, so that we all will see what was agreed upon with the lawyers, and then the, then it goes into effect, or how does that work?
The city will have another meeting to approve the final ordinance.
Okay.
Yep.
The last one I had was your inspections, that you're coming out for the safety. I have one part, I'm sure he'll get the other part, but part of your inspections, is it going to be to validate that there's no holding tanks? I don't see that. I know it says life and safety, so maybe that's not part of it.
That would be the septic compliance.
There is a septic compliance inspection also, separate.
Okay.
So that will, yeah.
That's all I had, so thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Five minutes, by the way, thank you for that.
Hi, my name is Aaron Boyson. I am here representing my father, Robert Boyson. He lives at 13454 Island View Road. He's actually near, excuse me, neighborhood, neighbors with Terry. And we are dealing, I think, with the same short-term rental problems with parking and other things. So I think Terry had a couple, answered a couple of questions that I had, but, and possibly a suggestion or two. The first is, in section 23.3, what does it mean when you say they have to submit a parking plan?
They have to submit a site plan? Go ahead, Chip.
Site plan and a parking plan.
What does, what does that mean?
That means a overview site plan, just like you would for building a house. It'd be a site plan with driveway, parking spots, the entire, like you would be submitting for a permit.
Okay.
And do you look at that when you do the inspection and just pre...
Yep, and part of the checklist when you go online to submit, there's actually a online portal that you can actually draw your plan right there on a link.
Will there be an opportunity for those affected by that plan to review it, as there is in the case of a variance or something like that?
Is it public record? Can they come in and look at what the plan then submitted?
Yeah, they're the ones that's submitting the plan, though.
Are you an owner, or are you next door to an owner?
I'm next door to a STR owner.
Okay, so he's not an owner.
But the parking, the parking plan that they might submit is probably going to be not agreeable to us, because there isn't a, technically, I don't think there's, which is my next question, what counts as a designated parking space?
Gotcha.
If that can't be in the easement, then I don't think there are any places to park for this owner.
Yeah.
So we would probably have problems with the plan, and so I would, I would ask that you guys consider...
Bring that to your attention.
Well, we would need to know what the plan is. So is it, is there a public review process for the parking plan and the site plan for the neighbors involved?
They can park in the driveway, though, you know, they can park three cars in the driveway.
Yeah, there's no driveway.
Though they don't have a driveway.
Nope.
Nice.
It clearly states that they can't park on landscape, or...
Yeah, they, I see that. I think I would like to encourage you all, I mean, the, in this case, that will cause the tenants of this owner to park more in the easement that's there already. On two occasions in the last few years, the, an ambulance has needed to be called to service, someone came out and couldn't get through because the cars were blocked, excuse me, in the last time, not the first time. It goes all the way to the end, and right now, the, if that owner is allowed four cars, they just, there's nowhere for them to be. So it's a key issue. I feel like if you can crack this nut, you won't deal with any other problems anywhere else, but...
What you're describing is a place that probably couldn't get a license if they can't qualify for it.
It sounds like. Yeah, okay.
And that will come out with inspections.
Would that include, then, you having to state somewhere what counts as a designated parking area? Like, who will adjudicate the easements and the right-of-ways? It's a particular question I have.
Well, you'd have to bring it to our attention, and then we'd have to look into it. We're not going to come across that that often.
Well, it's, I'm here asking you. I drove all the way from Duluth here tonight because I, I'm currently dealing with this now, and the county, neither the county nor the city says they, there is anyone who adjudicates the size of an easement or the right-of-way. So I'm stuck now, and that's why I'm hoping you can purge the ambiguity in that.
Sir, when they, when they go out to do the inspection, part of it is going to be looking at the parking plan that they have submitted. If it doesn't comply, then they have to start, address it at that time, prior to licensing up. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think so.
And that's, that is a private road. It's not a public road, so...
Oh.
I mean, there's, there's still zoning ordinances on parking in an easement, there's still easements there, but...
STR needs to add that to the question to the attorney, okay? So you brought up a point that we had not anticipated. Thank you.
My only...
You're getting close to your five.
Yeah, my only last thing, I'll keep it quick. I appreciate, I think the 60-minute, 30-minute thing is, is probably what it has to be, but I just want you to know that there are those of us who, who have needed to call the city line, and the police officers come out, have been amazing, they come right away, and had a different experience a little bit, but they, that's key, because we, in this case, we're just blocked from using our property, so we have to sit there and wait when we come up here, and that's untenable. And to wait an hour for some response, or even 30 minutes, is ridiculous.
Well, I would never hesitate to call the police, too.
Yeah, right.
Do them both.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep. The clock is ticking. Can't prod anybody into coming up?
Dave, can you clarify the 60-minute thing?
It's 30, 30 minutes...
21, look at that.
20, yeah, but there's two parts. 60 minutes is to correct it, 30 minutes is to respond to it.
What is that?
That, where is that, you guys?
23-11, so 60 minutes.
Yep.
But the...
Look at number E, 23-3, letter E.
Page two.
Owner's authorized agent, if owner is not acting in this role, each application shall include the appointment of a natural person who shall remain within 30-minute distance of the STR, and is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to serve as the owner's authorized agent. So it's 30 minutes response time, 60 minutes to correct whatever the problem is.
Can, should that, or can that, does that need to be addressed in the other section on the place? Could it just stay there, too? I agree with the same way you do, but...
No, I agree, because I...
It says nothing is within 30 minutes, so...
But I, I agree.
If you live within 30 minutes, it doesn't say that you...
You have to respond within, yeah, I agree, I think that should be added.
That needs to be fixed, yeah.
Okay, well, it should be respond.
It just says have to live within a 30-minute distance, but it doesn't say you have to respond.
Yeah. That's why I wrote it.
Okay. Just to have the right response. Yeah.
We already talked about that.
Maybe what is a response? Is it a home call, or is it...
No, no.
Showing up.
I think they got to personally be there.
Show up.
Well, say that's what a response is?
No, that's a good point. Respond in person, respond.
Physically.
Respond physically.
Right.
That's true.
Maybe it's a question that they can answer over the phone, right. So to respond within 30 minutes, yeah.
Well, then, if any of these are wrong, at any time, bring them to our attention, please, you know, if we need to fix something. Pam?
Hi, Pam Graves, 14131 Sugarloaf Road, Crosslake. Great start, we've been working on, you've been working on this for a long time. I just want to say, I've had some great responses from the property managers on the VRBOs next to me. When I call them, they call the renters, and the music stops within the 30 minutes. They don't have to drive over there to do it, that's going to take longer, so it doesn't have to say they physically have to go there to come, in my mind, so just letting you know.
Yeah. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify all of that? So it says, shall remain within a 30-minute distance of the STR and is available 24 hours a day. Okay, and they have 60 minutes to fix the problem. That's basically what it is. We don't have to change anything in here.
Don't have to what?
Change anything in here.
Okay, if they're, if they're within 30 minutes, but they don't have to be there?
No, they can fix it within 60 minutes, like it says right here.
Okay.
We're not, we're not rewriting ordinances here. This is taken from many, many, many ordinances throughout the country.
It's just confusing to what Dave was saying. He was saying they have to respond in 30 minutes, when it says 60.
No, it says they have to live within 30 minutes, because if we, because if we need them, if we...
What?
To...
I made it till August 12th before I made a mistake this year, okay? You got to give me credit.
Well, just to be very clear, it's respond within 60 minutes. Not just general point, you don't need to...
It solves the problem.
Respond within 60 minutes.
You were saying if it's 30 minutes, that's more palatable to me. I hate it, it's still too long. If it's 60 minutes, that's definitely, I don't care if it's standard or not, that's a long time for me to leave my driveway. That's ridiculous. I mean, do you think we have a good... Right?
That would be a police call.
That should be a police call. Your second call should be to the police, not your first.
Should be to them.
Tow the truck.
If they're blocking your, you know, property.
And again...
Right, right.
And again, if something's not working, please let us know. We'll change it.
I think part of that is like, if cars need to be towed, that will happen, you know, they'll make those calls within an hour. I mean, part of it is, you know, takes time to do some of that stuff, and it's, might take an hour.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Anne Schwartz again. So when you vet these licensed applicants, are you going to check for things like this? And like, I have a super-long driveway, nobody ever parks on the road, but somebody across the street from me does not, and has people parking on the road. So I'm just thinking, would you come out and see, oh, she's got this big, long driveway, she should never have more than four cars parked here? That kind of thing to help mitigate some of these concerns?
Well, we're going to do an inspection, so that'll be a visual, somebody will be out there.
Yeah, I get you're going to do an inspection, but I'm asking a specific question, so...
Are we gonna...
I'm hearing a lot of complaints about multiple cars, multiple vehicles, and blocking, and in the road, and all of that. So I'm just, because I have that concern about a neighbor, who you probably don't know about, because they don't let you know that they're renting. So I'm just saying, when you come out and do the inspection, you look at my driveway and say, hey, you can have a maximum of four cars, no more than that.
You know, that's going to be up to you, because when these licenses are issued, you're going to get a number that goes right below your fire number on the street. And if you know your neighbor isn't licensed and they're renting, that's going to be up to you whether you want to call us up and say...
And report.
I know they're renting.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, and I, that's great. I think that's really good. And to get the word out for people who know...
Trying to make a visual right there, you know they are.
Yeah, I get that. I'm thinking just like for, because the things that I have to go through to rent my property, I have to say what the number, limited number of vehicles, what that number is.
To your renters.
The number of people, no, to the public, and the license that I got through Corwin. The maximum number of people we can have, because I'm hearing people talk about, you know, 60, 30, 60 people, taxing on a septic, I don't have any of those issues. I already report all that, and I'm already limited based on the size and the space.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure for the money, you'll be doing a solid favor by telling all licensors that this is your limit.
We're going to do our best, and tell us what we're not doing good, because we'll try to fix it. We're really committed to try to do this right.
Thank you.
My name is Debbie Patrick. I live at 13433 Hidden Valley Road. Hidden Valley Road is a private road, there's, I don't know, eight or nine lots on it. Many of us are year-rounders, or have owned our property for a long time, two are VRBOs. And being a private road, our question as neighbors is, what about the extra wear and tear? One of the VRBOs, the last many weekends, has six to seven cars in the driveway. They cram them in there, they fit in the driveway or in the lawn, but the extra wear and tear on a private road, when we, as the few people that live there, have to pay for all of our own repairs, how is that fair to us when they're making money off their property and not paying any extra to help pay for that?
I would say that the six cars, if they're legitimate, can they have six cars there? Do they have enough bedrooms? That's a question.
I don't know, yeah, that's a question.
Do they have five or six bedrooms? So they probably won't be able to have six cars there.
Right.
But I don't think we're going to ever be able to get into the business of trying to figure out who resurfaces the blacktop. I mean, that's, but we can control how many...
It's just something to think about when you're talking about private roads, that we have a different situation, those of us that live on private roads than people that live on blacktop roads.
And the problem is, though, you might have a neighbor that constantly has relatives, you know, you know, I mean, how do you regulate or determine?
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
I think you just have to go to the owner of the VRBOs, and then say, you know, you're taxing the road, and get a larger contribution from them versus the single family owners.
That's not happening already, but anyway. And what about garbage cans being left out? When the driveway, you know, at the road, but they're left out, the garbage has been frequently overflowing, so then there's animals that have gotten in there, and there's garbage all over the ground.
24 hours, we allow it.
Okay, so that would be something we would call and complain about?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there something in that, this has been an issue a couple times? Chip, I don't know if you know offhand, without me looking, there's something that says if garbage is, if the garbage can's been hit by a bear and it's spread all over, is that all covered, too? Like, they have a certain amount of time to pick it up?
I don't identify that, but the property manager should take care of that.
That is the property manager, and that's, we're going to hold that in common before...
That's going to be part of the complaint process.
Or they can hire the trash company to do that.
Yeah.
They're due. Yeah, they can. Yeah.
Ooh, that sounds like a good side business.
But that is a complaint, if there's garbage, call and complain, and they've got 30 minutes to get out there and 60 minutes to correct it, you know? So it's up to you guys to, to call.
Is that the same for citizens, if their garbage is in front of their...
You know, I, I don't know.
It should be. It should be.
And Steve, we're going to, we're going to do a lot of that stuff, too, and try And Steve, we're going to, we're going to do a lot of that stuff, too, and try to get a blanket on it, you know, for, for everybody, so we got to look at it. But they should, people got to be responsible for this stuff, you know. Yeah. Pam?
Hi, Pam Graves, again, 14131 Sugarloaf Road, Crosslake. I may have missed it in the ordinance, I only saw the section that says, your garbage can cannot stay longer than 24 hours after pickup day, but I didn't see anywhere in there that said they can't put it out four days ahead of time.
No, it says 24 hours total time.
Total time before?
Yep.
So they can't put it out, if our pickup is Monday morning, they can't put it out Sunday morning?
Sunday evening.
Right.
Pick it up.
But we have people leaving on Friday night, or so they can't do that? That's the property manager?
Property manager's responsibility.
Okay, just clarify.
Yeah.
I thought it was, if they pick it up Monday morning, they had 24 hours to like Tuesday morning to put it back.
I know a place that's got a lot of cars in their driveway, and they don't have room for the garbage cans, so they leave them out on the street. There's three of them, they're all the time.
I read it's just 24 hours after the pickup day.
From the time it goes out, pick it up within 24 hours.
Thank you.
God bless.
We got 11 minutes left. Come on up, Aaron, I'll get to know you before this is done, huh?
Well, I mean, I drove from Duluth, I got to get my money's worth.
Yeah, good.
Just a quick follow-up about the holding tank, a thing that you said earlier when Terry, Terry asked, you're, you said if they have a holding tank, can't get a license.
Right.
You have to have a license, no exceptions.
No exceptions.
No exceptions. And if the person says they intend to get one, I guess now I'm thinking about the timeline for revocation of the license if they say that they're going to...
Come back when you get it done?
Right. So the license would be terminated?
Yeah.
And the city would come out and inspect that as soon as this goes into effect?
You mean like a county permit would be terminated?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
As of January...
The county permit.
Everyone would have to file through Crosslake.
The county permits were taken over January 1, so the county no longer exists.
And therefore the permit also?
Yep, and the permit also.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I might be back.
10 minutes.
But...
Okay, who's on?
Christina Altrada.
Chris, Christina, who does?
Yeah, Christina Johnson. She saw us this day.
Okay, go ahead, Christina, state your name and address, please.
Of course. My name is Christina Johnson. I have a property at 12651 Anchor Point Road in Crosslake, and I just want to have a couple clarifying questions. First of all, I know we've been talking about section 23-3E. Is that going to be rewritten? I thought I heard somebody on the council saying we are not going to be rewriting this. It's just, it's not really clear on the 30-minute distance. I know, I think you mentioned that it was 30 minutes to respond, but this says 30-minute distance of the short-term rental property.
Christina, they've already brought that to my attention, that I was in error saying the response time is 30 minutes.
Okay.
It's got to be available within 30 minutes.
Okay, and so that's going to be added in there?
No, I don't think we're going to add it, are we, Chip? No, it's going to remain the same.
It's in there.
That's, like I was trying to say earlier, that's if we need somebody there within a half an hour, like if something serious is going on, we need that person here. That's why that 30-minute response time is in there, and then they have 60 minutes to fix the issue. If they can't do it, the whole works, then it's a violation.
Right.
That's why the 30 minutes is in there and the 60 minutes to fix the issue. So they can get there within 30 minutes, and then they have 30 minutes on-site to take care of the issue.
Take care of it.
That's why it's written.
Okay, so anybody who live in Brainerd would be 40 to 45 minutes away. Like, I, it's, I understand, you know, I think somebody was talking about earlier where they need to have somebody come to the property, you know, they're blocking their driveway, I understand that, but the 30 minutes is just, I feel like that's really, really tight.
30 minutes, if they lived in Brainerd, they could not be an authorized agent. Okay?
Depends on where they live in Brainerd. If you live on northeast Brainerd, it's only 23, 24 miles, so...
Okay, but they've got to be within 30 minutes.
Okay. And I had a question for same section 23-3G. Just more or less asking, will there be sort of an approved form provided by the city council? Do we need to create our own affidavit to send to our neighbors?
There's one that will be in the online application. There will be one already provided that you will be able to have completed.
Okay. Is that something that we'll have to do every year?
I would think so with turnover with neighbors. I would think we'd need that every time you apply for license to make sure that everything is up to date.
Okay, because I feel like a lot of people that I've heard from tonight have all expressed how many years they've been living in Crosslake, but I think if we could add that in there, mentioning that it needs to be done every year, just to clarify.
Okay.
And then also two for same section 23-3J. Is everything going to be available within this time? I think it says the renewal application needs to be filed by November 30th of the year the license expires. I just know the county had trouble getting everything complete and available to short-term rentals on the first of the year.
On our platform and our website, so everything is all ready to go. It'll be probably ready before the first of the year.
Okay.
Just a lot of these documents will be ready way before the platform actually goes live.
Now, how about your inspections, Chip? If we can't make it to inspection, we'll have a little delay there.
We're going to try to go early.
Oh, okay, so yeah, if you're going to do on January 1, you should put in your app early so you can get the inspection done.
And we'll let you know when the, when all these are ready to go. I mean, we might have it, we might have them ready to go on the website prior to the actual platform going live, but that's easy to upload the papers on to the site, so...
We'll have Chief Loehmiller's cell phone number on there, too, so you can call him.
Yes, I think it was inspection needs to be done 60 days at a time. And then a question on section 23-5G, loud music, the hours, the quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, is that the same as the city?
Yes.
Does the city have quiet hours?
Yes.
I was having trouble finding. So I know right now with the county, it's Friday and Saturdays starts at 12:00 PM, or 12:00 AM, excuse me, to 7:00 AM.
City ordinance is 10 to 7. That's what it follows.
Perfect, thank you. And then just one more question, actually, sorry, two more questions. With one, 23-6, the inspection, will there be more clarifying details, like working fire extinguishers? I just want to make sure in preparation for the inspection that, you know, that we have everything set up.
Yes, I have that. Yes, I have the form already. It actually has links on to explaining the fire extinguishers and everything you need for your checklist, so that checklist will be, be able to be used online, and you'll be able to check it out and get it all done prior to an inspection, along with all the other paperwork.
Okay, great, because it looks like here you have that additional fee if there's a second visit for inspection.
If you're, if you're not compliant and you have to get things corrected, then I will have to come back, or somebody from the fire department will have to come back to do the re-inspection.
Okay.
But all these documents will be ready to go, so when I come out there, hopefully everything is done and ready to go.
Okay, yeah, I just, I have a long-term rental property that is, is a previous company that gets inspected, but I don't get charged for a re-inspection until the third time, just because there's certain things that come up that weren't outlined in their list. Okay, and then it looks like, we, I know we've talked at length with the storage container, the trash containers for 24 hours, and I believe I overheard somebody saying that that's going to be a blanket expectation across the city of Crosslake?
Yeah.
Well...
Okay.
I would hope. I mean, if we're going to do that short-term rentals, everyone should abide by that one. Right.
So do we have to change it now to do that? Is there an ordinance against that now?
Couldn't find anything online.
So then we'll have to.
So we, yeah, we should put that on the docket to do, to add that. Lori, did you get that? Okay, Christina, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We have got two minutes left. Not seeing anything. Jackson, make your motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?